Hi, everybody. Welcome back to Riding the Wave. I'm Mark Keely, the editor in chief of the Wave newspaper, Rockaway's newspaper since 1893. Joining me today is Selvina Brooks-Powers. She is running for city council to replace Donovan Richards, who of course is now the Queensborough president and District 31 has been in good hands with Councilman Richards, a very hard worker, obviously someone who we have a good relationship here with at The Wave. And you know, Selvina, certainly, I think that anyone who's read The Wave certainly knows that some of the things that you've done, but why don't you, why don't you let the audience get an idea of your background and why you decided to run?
Absolutely, and thanks so much, Mark, for the opportunity to come and speak with you and the viewers and readers of The Wave. Once again, my name is Selvina Brooks-Powers. I'm actually a resident here, homeowner here in the Rockaway community. This year makes 13 years that I have been a homeowner here, but I have been, you know, born and raised in southeast Queens. I'm currently, along with my husband, raising our daughter here, and I have been serving this very community for the past 17 years now in different capacities, whether it be having worked for the state senate, the mayor's office, working with some of the most vulnerable people in New York, the survivors of domestic violence. I have worked in the labor movement, fighting for an increase to the minimum wage of $15 an hour. I have also worked at Peninsula Hospital up until its closure several years ago, and I currently work with the JFK redevelopment program, which is one of the largest infrastructure programs in the country that presents a pretty significant opportunity for our community to be able to benefit, whether it's from employment or contracting opportunities. And so what has, and that's just my professional, I would say, experience, but in my personal capacity, I'm pretty active through a number of ways. I serve on the board in the Arbor and By the Sea community for my immediate community, but I also am a member of the Queens alumni chapter for Delta Sigma Theta sorority incorporated, which is a community service oriented organization where we have done things around the census and getting the count out, among so many other issues pressing in the community. I have led a youth program focusing on middle school aged girls for the past almost 15 years as well. I've worked with at-risk young males as well from the community. And so, service has been something that's just always been in me. And what led me to run was not something I, you know, made this decision lightly or anything like that. It's something that really took thought at the beginning of this pandemic for me, and Mark, I'm not sure, it may be the same for you. It was reminiscent of Superstorm Sandy and what I saw in terms of the way government responds to our community. And for me, that was a problem for me. Our community was not prioritized in terms of testing sites or access to PPEs when we were one of the hardest-hit communities, you know. And so, I immediately did what I knew best, which was to respond, where I partnered with some friends and we were able to procure a large quantity of mass and donate them to St. John's Hospital. We also donated some to the Joseph P. Adabo Family Health Center. I was able to work with the Family Health Center as well to establish one day a week where our seniors and retirees could be tested up until where more testing sites became available. And so, in going through, you know, what was something that I went through even with Sandy and connecting with the community and listening and witnessing where I found, you know, government wasn't responding the way I would have liked to see, I decided to take this step and to put my hat in a ring to run to represent our community.
So, you know, when, when I interview a candidate, somebody who, you know, has, like yourself, lives in Rockaway, I always tell, I always ask about Rockaway proper, you know, because, let's be honest, people who live in Rockaway really don't care about the rest of Queens. And, and, and sometimes that's a good thing, sometimes, you know, maybe it's not so helpful. But, you know, we are in a very challenging time, obviously. We are in a very divisive time. We are in a situation where, you know, people are constantly weighing the balance of reopening, helping rebuild the economy, getting the vaccine to the people that need it most, making sure that the city and the state and the federal government are making sure that people are getting what they need, you know, just to, just to, you know, get back some semblance of normalcy. And I know that it's difficult right now to even, you know, imagine us not wearing a mask or not being able to do the things economically that we need to do. As, as someone who would represent this district and somebody who would be, you know, asked to work with whoever is the new candidate, at least in, for the time being, would be, you know, Eric Ulrich until, you know, he's term limited at the end. And then whoever, you know, when you run again, you know, if you win and you run again, obviously there needs to be, not just for the district, but for the peninsula itself. A, what, what do you think are the top issues right now for the 31st District? And B, are you willing to work with the other councilperson, councilmember of the 32nd District to make sure that those things are addressed?
So I think those are very great questions. And first and foremost, and I think you've witnessed this through the years of knowing me, I've always been the person that looks to bring community together. I'm about building coalitions. I truly believe in the saying that if my neighbor is not okay, then how can I, right? So if my neighbor's house is on fire, there's a chance that my house can become on fire as well. And so, we have to work together to ensure that our community thrives and grows in the way that it should. And so, anything that's going to put our community first, I am all in for. I know councilmember Ulrich, I see the work that he's done through the years and how he's been able to work with our former and now Queensborough president Donovan Richards. I see how he's worked across the peninsula with different elected officials. And, you know, it's a need for that. And in terms of the issues, for the past year now, I've been really having some conversations across the 31st District, wanting to hear firsthand from the residents in terms of what some of their priorities are, how do they see the community right now? And what I find is, as much as people look to say Rockaway versus Laurelton, Rosedale, Springfield Gardens, there's a lot of synergy in what our issues really are, right? So when you talk to people in Rockaway that are saying, "My kids are not getting the resources they need in school," I'm hearing the same thing in Rosedale. And so, there's a lot of issues that transcend our community boundary lines that are the same. But as far as Rockaway, I'll say, some of the top priorities is, one, needing to really get back on a road to recovery. COVID-19 pandemic has really impacted us in a number of ways. When you look at how it's impacted our small businesses, a few months ago, I had the opportunity to take a walk on the downtown merchant corridor on Mont Avenue with the SBS commissioner, and I heard firsthand from the business owners there. And some of them had, they owned more than one business there, and some of which had to close maybe one of them. And that's a real problem, because in our community, a lot of these business owners are residents in our community. A lot of them take their loans to establish their business from the equity in their homes. So if their business fails, then there's a chance that they could lose their home. So we're looking at something that can have a ripple effect into the community. Another thing is the achievement gap widening in our schools, because, again, with this switch to the remote learning, we find that there, I think it was about November or something, the mayor had made a statement at a press conference where he said there was up to about 77,000 students in New York that were without access to the proper tools to do their schoolwork, and that's problematic. So if they're at school, you have students who are at home that don't have access to the internet, that don't have a laptop or a tablet, some of which are doing their schoolwork on their phones at, at best. And you have to think about what type of lasting impact that's going to have on our community. Another thing is public safety. As I'm sure, well, I know you know, we've seen an increase in gun violence that's taken place not only in Rockaway, but also in Rosedale and Springfield Gardens and Laurelton just two weeks ago. A man and woman was shot in Laurelton. New Year's Eve, a young man from Rosedale was murdered also as a result of gun violence. So there's a lot of pressing issues right now, and we have to work together and not focus on so much of what divides us and come together and really see how we can bring tangible results to address these issues. And, you know, again, I'm raising my family here. I'm not going anywhere. And so, we, I have a vested interest in this community and seeing it really flourish and thrive the way it should.
When you talk about, just to use your words, you know, building coalitions, right? I talk about that all the time, how, you know, I like to build bridges. I don't like to burn them. I don't like to, you know, I always try to find common ground with, you know, as the editor of the paper, you know, we cover the whole peninsula. So, you know, I have to work with everyone, and I always have to make sure that I don't take sides. My job's not to take sides. My job is to give people as much information as they possibly can get and to educate and engage, and when I can entertain. It's important for us to be locked into the community, just like I feel like whoever, you know, is sitting on the city council needs to be locked into the community. And you are certainly someone who has done that, you know. I, this is not, you know, this is not the first time we've spoken. This is not the first time that we've interacted. So I have a sense of some of the things that you stand for. And that's why when, when you said building coalitions, I'm like, yeah, well, that, she's done that, you know, Selvina's done that. But we're also in a, we're also in a, in a time where people are not as trustful of law enforcement as they, as they have been in the past, despite the fact that we have a great CO at the 101st precinct. I think Captain Robinson has done a really good job taking over for, you know, Deputy Inspector Tavallaro, and even before that, Justin Lenz, the late Justin Lenz, who I know you know. The 101 has done, I feel, being one of the pilot programs for community policing, has, has done the job of outreach. Do you feel, A, do you agree with that, that the 101 has done that kind of outreach? And B, as a city councilperson representing that district, what do you feel your responsibility is to work with the precinct? You know, how do you feel about working together with, with the, you know, the 101 on a community policing level?
No, thank you for that question. And let me just say that there's a conversation happening across the country that is pretty much is a reckoning that was expected to come eventually in terms of addressing the way in which communities of color, I will say, often engage with law enforcement. We even saw it a few weeks ago in terms of the insurrection in DC, in terms of how the lawlessness that took place at that time was handled versus instances where people of color have had engagements with law enforcement. And this is the thing that often adds to that spirit of distrust. And so, there's a lot of work to be done to really bridge that divide. I do know Captain Robinson. I've met with Captain Robinson. I've met with his NCOs, who continue to take steps to work with the community. And, and so, I can say that I have firsthand witnessed that in terms of the efforts that they made. But at the same time, we also have to recognize that this conversation is one that is of importance and that we must continue to work very hard to address these issues in the community. And so, I'm always looking for ways to partner and to bridge these gaps. And it's going to take it from, take the, it's going to have a need from all sides of the conversation to really come to the table and really listen and hear out, you know, what these concerns really are. Because what we see in the news is not something that necessarily just happens so far away. These are things that have happened also in the NYPD. And so, there needs to be truly a spirit of accountability. And I know in speaking with Captain Robinson, he also agreed with that and said that, you know, he holds his officers to high standards and holds them accountable. And so, while I haven't had to engage with him in terms of any negativity that we've seen in the news this past year, it is my hope that he will continue to hold true to what he has shared with me. And that is his commitment to the community and protecting the community and treating members of the community with dignity and respect. And so, I can say that much.
So, you know, let's switch gears, because I do think it's related, but some people might say, oh, maybe it's not related. But, you know, job creation, employment, I think that people of color, especially in downtown, the downtown Far Rockaway area, you know, there is a lot of concern with the, with the jobs not being there. And it's all, you know, it's all kind of...
Interrelated.
It's all interrelated. You know, you have businesses that are closing. Those businesses, it's not just people always say, oh, you know, profits over people. It's not that. That's never been our conversation at The Wave. It's about, if these people are not in business, if they can't open their business, they can't employ anyone, they can't, and all of those businesses, people aren't coming from Long Island to work in downtown Far Rockaway. People aren't coming from Manhattan to work in downtown Far Rockaway. The people who work in downtown Far Rockaway and work in that district, in your district, that you're hopefully going to represent, all come from that district for the most part, right? I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know the percentage, but I would, I would bet that there's a lot. So it's really about job creation, employing people, educating people, creating programs for people. What are some of the things, you know, I've, I've spoken to some of the other people that are running. They do have, Nancy Martinez, for example, has a background in job creation. So, Selvina, as someone who is running against Nancy and some other folks, how would you help to alleviate, you know, or at least, at least address some of those concerns that people have about, you know, for instance, you know, with all of that development downtown, you know, all of these buildings going up, and, you know, I drive through there every day and I'm amazed at some of the development that's going on. And I know that, you know, Donovan Richards always celebrated, you know, that the city was investing in downtown Far Rockaway. So, you know, will you hold the developers accountable for the promises that they've made about local employment? Are you going to be someone that's going to help with job creation? How are you going to address those issues, you know, especially when you're running against people that have the ability to, or at least have shown the ability to create jobs?
No, absolutely. And thanks for that question as well. I myself also have, through the JFK redevelopment, been able to begin to create those opportunities. And again, what I said was one of the largest infrastructure programs. Obviously, the program is not where we envisioned it to be today due to the pandemic and the way that the aviation industry has been impacted. But we have, in the short window of time, been able to create opportunities in terms of contracting and employment opportunities, where we built out a $2 million community office, where there are, you know, cleaning opportunities that have taken place that are, that we also have, you know, those type of contract opportunities that employ people from the local community as well. And so, not to mention, through the years, I have worked around employment and workforce. When I worked in the senate, we had, I don't know if you remember this, Operation Everybody Works. And this was around the time when we had a recession back, and I think it was like 2006, '07. And we created a weekly, almost job fair, where we partnered with businesses that we told them on the front end, like, you have to hire someone that's qualified, like, don't come just to show your banner. And we got a lot of people employed through that. And it was about that creative, out-of-the-box thinking. So I have, through the years, in a number of capacities, been able to hire people from right within this community. Also, in the conversation of having with business leaders and whether it's in the community or in government, have started to have the conversation about how do we get people employed. We have to have a realization that the trend of what is actually hiring right now is changing, right? And so, our workforce needs to now be prepared for that in terms of the increased use of technology. So people have to be versed with technology. The healthcare industry, there are so many job opportunities that exist now and that will continue to grow. So we need to reshape and retool our workforce development program so that we're not doing the same, oh, check-the-box type of trainings, but we're doing trainings that are connecting people to opportunities. And even in my current role, the conversations I have with the terminal developers, it is about really connecting people to opportunities. So if we're creating a training module, at the end of that, it should be lining people up, because now that they've gone through that training, one would hope that they would then be eligible for these opportunities. So creating those pipelines, and as councilmember, I would definitely be looking for those opportunities. And I also am a big proponent of holding people accountable. I've held people accountable through the years on a number of things. And a lot of people look at me and see that I'm small, and I always smile and I'm pleasant, but I'm also someone that's very firm on commitments. I hold myself accountable, and if I say I'm going to do something, I work really hard to get it done. And if I can, I say that I can, because it's about that open, transparent communication. And so, when people are coming to develop in our community, my expectation is that people from the community can afford to live there, and people who want to work there have that opportunity for employment there. And so, with these commitments, I wholeheartedly will be looking to ensure that that gets done.
I think that one of the, you know, to go, just go back with the developers, right? You have the developers in downtown Far Rockaway. You have Arbor and East. You have Edgemere Commons. All of these different things that are popping up, different developers, you know, and, and to me, it's always about rhetoric and, and execution, right? There are people who talk a good game, and then there are people who don't, you know, they go along to get along, you know, they, whether it's a party thing and the party decides that, oh, you know, this is the way we're handling this right now. And, you know, and nobody likes a rebel, you know, nobody likes a rebel, especially the party. And it doesn't matter what party it is. Everybody thinks that there's so many differences. Politics are politics. And I think that the more plainly you speak to people, the more that you show that you're doing things. I think that's really resonant. And I know it resonates with me, but I think that also resonates with the people who live it, you know, the people who live it every day. You know, they get up in the morning, they take the subway. When politicians or elected officials, which is what everyone prefers, but when, you know what I'm saying? Like, when people say, oh, you know, don't, don't, we don't need parking spaces because we're going to use infrastructure, and we're going to use, yeah, but the people who take...
Don't get me started on parking spaces.
But that's what I'm saying. You know, like, people who take the subway every day, they know that it's not great. So if you want us to take public transportation, hey, fix it. You know, the...
Make it better, yep.
Whenever Mayor de Blasio tells us that, oh, the A-train's back, I mean, it's hilarious. I mean, do you take the A-train ever? So I think it's, I think it's really important that the person who gets this job, you know, the person who gets to represent this district has to understand what the, what, what people go through every day that live there, whether it's, you know, whether it's people who work in the, in the area, whether it's people who live and work in the area. So what I'm saying is, are you going to help, hold these developers to their, you know, to their promises of local employment, of affordable housing? You know, because I think people sometimes forget that affordable housing can become a shelter, or the city, you know, if the city decides to pay top dollar for those units and turning into something that wasn't promised there. You know, I think a lot of people like the idea of affordable housing, don't necessarily like the idea of adding more homeless shelters or homeless units to an area that unemployment is the highest in Queens. You're not helping the people in the area. You're not helping the people that you're putting in the area, that you're placing there. And is it really benefiting the people from the community in the first place? So are you someone that's going to stand up to these developers and to, to the agencies, like the Department of Homeless Services, to make sure that the people in that community, in the 31st District community, are being, are being taken care of?
So absolutely. Again, I live here. So everything you spoke about, I know firsthand. There have been nights where I have had to walk about, from Beach 69th Street all the way down into the 70s to be able to come from where I was able to park, right? Because with doing the work that I do in the community, I come home at different hours of the day, as a night rather. And so, there have been nights that I've had to literally walk by myself to get home because there's no parking. So that's a, that's a real issue. And I do feel like when people are investing in our community, they have to come with that community lens on for me. And I've demonstrated that commitment even in the role that I currently have. And I think any of the terminal developers will gladly say, or, you know, I don't know if it's gladly, but they will say that I am that pin in their side when we meet and we talk about community. Because if you're coming into our community to make it better, it has to be inclusive of the voices and the people who are here. And so, I am someone that knows how to push the needle, I'll say. I know, I, I know how to keep people accountable, and that's something I will look to continue to do. I am not that go-along-to-get-along. I am that person that looks to find ways to bridge gaps. But for me, when people keep that communication open, and we've had this conversation before too, like offline, and I'm, I'm pretty much, very much a straight shooter on things. So what I say is what I mean. And, and no one has to ever think about reading in between the lines with me. And so, I expect the same. And sometimes, you know, not everyone, I've been told even by some of my sororities, that sometimes my, my bar is a little bit higher in terms of what my expectations are. But that's just who I am as a person, if I'm quite frank about it. And so, we have a lot of development coming into Rockaway. And with the development, it presents a lot of opportunities, you know, opportunities in terms of construction jobs, opportunities in terms of the operations of these entities, where people could really have, you know, work that helps them pay their bills and get by, and do more to get by, and be able to provide for their families and put food on the table. And that's so important for us, because what is it going to be for us to have all these beautiful buildings up in Rockaway and people are not working and can't even afford to be there? What do we think is going to happen to the community? We don't need to bring new people onto the peninsula. We can't take care of the people who are already here.
Right. No, absolutely. So, so, on a lighter note, um, so, you know, obviously, there's always talk about, we, we, we just covered a bunch of stuff about the concessions on the boardwalk, which is not in your district. However, people forget that there are concessions in your district, and there are people from Far Rockaway that use the beach and use the boardwalk. As someone who rides his bike on the boardwalk, I haven't done it recently. I have to keep, I have to get back to doing that. But I, I ride my bike down there all the time. You know, Charles and the Dread Surfer Grill, I mean, I love Charles, and I love his family. I mean, I want to see them do well. How, as the city council representative for the 31st District, how can you, you know, work with parks, you know, to do a better job of, I mean, because when, when you get off of, I believe, I forget exactly which street it is, but, but the boardwalk ends, I believe, is it 19th where the boardwalk ends, and then it's the concrete all the way down?
Yeah, down to, a little, a little bit past O'Donoghue, just like a little bit past, yeah.
Right, right. So, now, I've spoken to Gordon Williams and other folks down that way about, it's almost like a... if it it's almost like a demarcation uh where when the concrete starts, that's where the Parks Department has decided it doesn't care about the rest of the boardwalk. And you know, it's, it's, it's troubling. Uh and it would be nice if if the person who is going to become the the city council, uh city council person for that district would make an issue of it. And again, maybe it's not the most important thing. But I'm one of those people that believe that if you're driving along the Rockaway freeway uh and you're not from that area and you see garbage all over the place, you know, maybe you're gonna roll down your window and throw the garbage out. You're like, oh, the people around here that live here don't seem to care about it, so I'll throw garbage. So I think it's the same almost mindset. And I'm telling you, I have, I have been down that way when, in the summer, when the barbecues are going and people are out and they're having fun. It it's a great atmosphere, it's a great place to be. So if Parks is not doing its job and upkeep uh and the city is not per pushing Parks to do that upkeep on that side of the of the boardwalk, uh it really needs a champion. So are you willing to be that person that, you know, can, you know, get that equity going from from a city agency that that again, the rhetoric is, oh, yes, equity and everybody's equal and we're all the same. The the execution has not been that way.
No, the execution has not been that way. And quite honestly, we are home to one of the best beaches, the best beach in the city of New York, okay? And um I pride myself on the beach, I bring friends out here. Normally, when I first moved um into my home, I remember basically it'd be like tooth and nail to get people to come visit me. Now everybody just can't stop coming out here. They wanna move out here and everything. And you know, we have this amazing beach, which has been God sent even in the middle of this pandemic. We've had the option to go out on a boardwalk, get that fresh air and that great feeling. In the summertime, I ride the bike there too, the Lime Bike. Um that's my thing, I get a few friends to come out and ride with me also. Um and I feel there's so much more that could be done on the boardwalk, on the beach in terms of activities and programming. Like when you look at Long Beach and their boardwalk and how many concessions they have, it's just bustling, the energy is bustling. And for the short period of time that um I lived in the Bay Area, just seeing how their coastal communities really maximize how they um developed concessions and activities. And then I look at our boardwalk, I was so happy a few years ago when they first started to have like the pop-up events and stuff. You know, you get a different e- energy there and I feel like it needs to be more consistent. Um I think we need to create more opportunities also for local um community residents who want to be concessions on the boardwalk as well. Not to mention, we just really need to do a lot more in terms of the resiliency, which is a whole nother conversation. Because as you see, the sand has been leaving us and the the actual sand part of the beaches is shortening over the years. Um but there's so much work to be done on um our beach, on our boardwalk. Um and so I absolutely would champion that. Um I enjoy going to our boardwalk this summer, that's where I held my meetings. It's socially distanced, of course. And you know, it's a, it's a great place for families, um for tourists, you know, being nearby the airport. You know, people sometime that I've met um tell me that they will take the train over here when they have um a long connection. And they'll come and they'll walk the boardwalk, but we need more things to attract people um here also. So um what you spoke about is definitely something that I would be looking to also. My neighbors in my development talk about this all the time too. As as homeowners, we wanna make sure we have activities, we have children, we wanna have things to do. And so a lot of great work has been done, but there's still more work to be done and and I'm super excited about the potential to to get that done.
It's like, uh, you know, it's like, you know, I I'm the dishwasher in the house, right? I do all the cooking and I I wash all the dishes, my wife does all the laundry. It's always more laundry to be done, doesn't matter, like nobody cares, like, oh, I did laundry yesterday, you gotta do laundry again. Oh, I washed all the dishes, but there's a dishes full of sinks. That's, that is what working in government is like. And I try to explain that to people and, you know, not that I've ever worked in government, I wouldn't last a week, but um but, you know, there's always more work to be done. And you're right. And and I think sometimes, uh especially for the Parks Department, sometimes it's always on the defensive when things are pointed out to them that need to be addressed. And again, you said it before, uh you know, about how people assume because you're friendly, you have a smile, uh that, you know, that you're not gonna be tough. I know for a fact that you you are tough, uh you know, and um you know, I I certainly wish you all the, all the luck in the world a- as you move forward with this candidacy and your race. And if people wanna support you, if they wanna um, you know, learn more about you, where should they go?
Absolutely. And thanks so much for that. And again, thanks for the opportunity to to talk to the viewers and readers of The Wave, um which I've had a longstanding relationship with. I used to actually write columns for um my boss there weekly, um yeah, weekly and appreciated even that opportunity. But to learn more about me, um my background and where I stand on a number of issues, people can go to my website at www.selvina.com. I try to make it very easy. And uh people can connect with me there, they can email me there and I respond. Um and you know, members of my team weigh in, but I like to respond myself because I like to hear firsthand from people um what their concerns are, what the issues are. And I think that's something that sets me aside from other people because I really, when I talk about issues, it's because I've spoken to enough people in our community to really have a deep understanding of how it's impacting their day to day life and what they would like to see. And so um I'm excited, campaigning is fun. I've run a number of campaigns, whether it's issue based or electoral and it allows you to connect to so many people, so many different people and really see how much we really have in common that a lot of people may not even recognize.
Again, the special election is uh February twenty third. Uh and uh, you know, Selvina is uh running against uh several of the candidates who we will be speaking with uh here on Riding the Wave moving forward. Selvina, thank you for your time today and uh, you know, stay safe and we'll see you down the road.
Thank you so much, Mark. Have a great one.
You too.